This is the library in the Steeple Center.
Back by the high school.
Yeah, middle school.
Good evening. I'd like to call the regular city council meeting for Tuesday, September 17th, 2024 to order. Please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Welcome, everyone, those in the audience and on TV this evening, on cable. Are there any additions or corrections to the agenda?
No, sir.
Seeing none, I'll move the agenda. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we have an agenda. First item up this evening, presentations, proclamations, and acknowledgements, special event update. Mr. Schultz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. I just wanted to remind the council and the community that this Saturday will be the sixth annual Rosemount Food Truck Fest. We are going to be operating the event from 4:00 PM till 9:00 PM down in Central Park. We've got 16 food trucks, we've got a beer vendor, we've got live music. From 4:00 to 5:30 PM will be the band Triple Dog Dare, and then from 6:00 to 9:00 PM will be the band Rag Town. And we are expecting good crowds. I was told by our communications manager that we had over 2,000 people who are interested in the event, so she says that's a good thing. So we're looking forward to another great year with a lot of variety of food vendors. We did change over some of the vendors this year from the years past just to kind of keep things a little bit new, a little bit fresh. And so we will have a good variety for everyone who comes out. And, you know, we will try to run this event rain or shine. There is some talk of maybe a little bit of rain coming on Saturday, but we'll do our best to get this event in and go from there. And I will stand for questions.
Open to council. Any questions or comments?
Just a quick question about the food truck vendors who are coming. How many of them are like from Rosemount or?
We have, I want to say, three from Rosemount right now. I mean, if they are from Rosemount, we do our very, very, very best to get them into our event. I know Ryan from Lost Tortillas, Old Smokey Barbecue, and I can't think of a third one that I think is also from town, so.
Great. Thank you.
Nope.
Remind me, what year is this for us?
This is our sixth annual.
Sixth annual. So this is getting to be quite a premier event for us.
Yeah, and I think all of you know that our goal is to do some remodeling down in Central Park and expand that park a little bit. You know, we'd like to get up to, you know, 24 trucks at some point in time, make this quite a bit bigger event. Right now, we're really limited to the space we have, you know, with allowing for runners for all the different trucks and things like that. We need parking for that. But I think as we expand Central Park and do some things a little bit different, we'll be able to make this a bigger and better event, probably expand the time that we run it, you know, maybe go from 1:00 to 9:00 or something like that. But I think while I stand here, I'll also plug Oktoberfest, which is a new event this year. We're working with North 20 and Omni Brewing on that event. That's going to be October 12th. That's going to be from noon to 7:00 off the top of my head. And that's, we're going to have food trucks and different things kind of related to Oktoberfest. So another fun special event for the community to take part in. And I just noticed, I think we posted that Monday on our Facebook page. I think we have about 600 people already interested in that, so.
Excellent.
Another fun event to take part in.
Good. I was going to give you that opportunity to mention that if you didn't, so appreciate that.
All right.
All right. Anything else? All right, that completes 3A. Move on to four, response to public comment. I don't believe we have any items to respond to this evening. We'll move to item five, public comment. Anyone wishing to address the council at this time on subjects not part of the meeting agenda may do so. Typically, these replies are to concerns expressed, can be made via letter or phone call within a week to respond to those items. So if you're wanting to address the council, please step forward, state your name and address and your comment or question. Welcome.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, council members, Al Vile, 14235 Azalea Path. My request, currently not knowing the council's intent on the proposed consent agenda, I'm asking for item E be pulled for further discussion. That's my request. Thank you. Thanks for the opportunity.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else? All right, we'll close the floor and consider item five completed. Next item up is our consent agenda, items 6A through G. We have bills listing minutes of our September 3rd work session and regular meeting minutes. We have an approval of an encroachment agreement for property at 14372 Davenport Avenue. We have a request by RGA Holdings LLC to rezone 211 acres of land from A to B to employment, which during public comment was requested to be pulled, the approve, approval of permanent easement along Akron Avenue, and the BMR Frana addition accepting public improvements. To council, anyone wishing to pull any items for further consideration or comments?
Just E.
E, yep.
I think E was kind of a unanimous thing here. All right, so 6E removed. Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda with 6E removed?
Motion to approve the consent agenda, items 6A through G with item E pulled.
I'll second.
Motion by Essler, second by Freski. Roll, please.
Essler?
Aye.
Kemple?
Aye.
Wiesensel?
Aye.
Freski?
Aye.
Approves 4-0. Call up 6E.
Thank you, Mayor.
Just to note in check.
Members of the council, this is an item that is a request to rezone approximately 217 acres east of Akron Avenue and west of Blaine Avenue on the north side of County Road 42. The request comes from the applicant, RGA Holdings, as they have been working on site assembly, entering into purchase agreements for the various parcels that comprise the subject property. Staff's understanding is that the purpose of their request is to add clarity for marketing of the parcel for sale and development. The site is consistent with the city's comprehensive land use plan. As you can see, it is guided for BP Business Park, which is shown in purple on the map before you. The proposed rezoning would rezone all the parcels within the red outlined area there from its current AG or A2 Agricultural District zoning to B to employment, which is most consistent with the business park development that is located south of 42 and east of County Road 3, that is also zoned B to employment. Staff would also like to note that this was heard by the Planning Commission, which held a public hearing during its meeting last month. Public notice went out to approximately 80 property owners, including all of Tallamore, which is immediately west of the site. I'm happy to speak to the request, answer any questions the council may have. Also, one last note, there was an AUAR, which is an environmental review conducted for this site that anticipates two potential development scenarios consisting of either a distribution center or a data center.
Thank you. Then I'll open up to council. Any questions or comments for the action?
I'll start with one question. Can you explain the difference between you state that this is part of our comprehensive plan to be business park, but yet we have to rezone it? Like, kind of talk about the two different pieces and how they're related, and then the sequence of events of how that typically happens?
Certainly, certainly. And that's also a good example of why the applicant is requesting the rezoning, because while the city's comprehensive land use plan is the ultimate overarching guide for development, the zoning of a site dictates the specific technical details of that site development, such as setbacks, building height, lot coverage. So when someone is looking for land to develop, their first stop should typically be the city's comprehensive plan. The Met Council technically does require the rezoning of parcels within the city into conformance with that comp plan after its adoption. What we do here in Rosemount, as other cities in the kind of green, greenfield areas of the metropolitan area, we wait until development comes in to do rezonings, because they don't always, or development doesn't always follow those perfect squares like you would see in our comprehensive plan. And oftentimes, our land use designations allow for secondary zoning if there is an opportunity to put a convenience store in the corner of a business park area. So we've been basically waiting until development comes in before rezoning into conformance with the comprehensive plan.
Okay.
Does that answer your questions, council member?
It does.
Follow-up.
So I think you answered the question that the plan the city follows is really our comprehensive plan. There was some chatter on some of social media that the AUAR is the plan for the city. That's not accurate. Can you give a high-level overview of what an AUAR is?
Sure. So an AUAR stands for an alternative, or an area-wide urban alternative review, alternative urban-wide area review, sorry.
Yes.
And it is a type of environmental review, similar to an environmental assessment worksheet, which is a way that developers, which, once they hit a certain threshold, are required to conduct. An AUAR is done before a project comes in, particularly when development would be occurring in phases, rather than doing one EAW for each individual piece of that development area. Oftentimes, an AUAR will be conducted for the entire site. It is site-specific. It is not citywide. The city does have several AUARs that have been adopted by the council over the years. Umore Park is the biggest AUAR area. The city's also adopted an AUAR for a piece of land east of Highway 52 for potential development there. The AUAR is done well in advance of any applications for development, and it is a, something that I understand to be somewhat unique to Minnesota. But it's often done ahead of time to prep a site for future development. Development must occur within the scope of that AUAR. So in this case, a scenario where the site would be developed as a distribution center was included, as well as a scenario for a data center. And all sort of impacts on the vicinity and on the city are analyzed for those different uses, and mitigation steps are identified.
Thank you.
And on this particular AUAR, did you receive any feedback from any of the stakeholder groups that you recall?
So with this AUAR, it was, when it came through the EQB monitor, which is what the publication is that puts it out for the various agencies to review, initially, the Met Council had objected to the AUAR due to the fact that it had proposed, when they had proposed the data center use, a water cooling type system that was very dependent on water and required a lot of water use. And the Met Council objected to that AUAR. Since then, the applicant updated the AUAR to shift that to an air-cooled type system if the site is developed as a data center, thereby reducing its reliance and need for water from the city's system.
Okay. And then, obviously, you know, there have been several AUARs, and I know one hit the news last year, right, around this so-called Project Mercury?
Mm-hmm.
Just a little bit east of here. Can you, you tell us where is the status of that so-called Project Mercury, or what's moving on that one? Do you know?
So that was done preemptively. In fact, staff didn't even, wasn't aware that the owner of that property had been marketing it for development. It's entirely possible that there is a developer that was just sort of kind of prepping the site ahead of making an offer or any potential development. Staff is not aware of any development proposals for that site, or if that site is even being marketed for sale and development. Also on that note regarding the subject property before you tonight, staff has not received any applications for any development of that property either.
Okay.
Council member?
Yeah, I, you know, I think over the past, I'd say, 18 months, we've probably learned a lot of lessons on how, you know, how to continue to work with the public. And I think we've done a really good job. I think staff has done a really good job educating the public on what the process is. I think just maybe if you can expand a little bit on, again, a reminder that the property is not owned by the city. This is a private owner. They are making the request to change the zoning from agriculture to B to employment. So question for you is, if we knew that that was, if we knew that that's what was consistent with what the comprehensive plan was, why didn't we proactively, maybe explain why we can't just go proactively do it when we've got a, we've got a user, an owner of the property that's actually using it for potentially agricultural purposes, right? Like, we can't go and just, you know, dictate that we need to change the zoning. Maybe talk a little bit about that?
Sure.
And make it clear that the owner of the property is that, that they're the party that requests the rezone versus this isn't us proactively going to the owner and telling them to do, we're going to do a rezone. Maybe expand on that a little bit.
Yep, certainly. In this case, the applicant is the owner or in process of acquiring all of the parcels within there. The application was signed by all of the property owners within that rezone area. The city is not preemptively rezoning this. Now, that isn't to say the city couldn't preemptively rezone land. It would create nonconformities, which is another reason why we don't typically rezone our entire city to be into conformance with our comprehensive plan. But the only thing really dictating how land develops and is used is first and foremost, the comprehensive plan.
Mm-hmm.
But as I said, we do wait to rezone sites because we wouldn't want to create nonconforming uses that are allowed to continue. But until we know what development will be occurring and what it'll actually look like and what those boundaries will be.
Yep.
It's just been staff's practice that it's better to leave it in its current state. This is a private, private market-driven action request.
And just, again, due process, again, for residents to understand, what's the normal practice if this owner of the, if this, the property owner who's accumulating all these parcels to market it, obviously, they're preemptively getting the rezone, trying to get, to find a buyer to use it for the probably highest and best use. What's their process to communicate to the city? So when do we find out that there's a potential buyer for this property?
Well, typically, we wouldn't know until we receive an application. A lot of times, we'll get inquiries asking about the zoning of a site, or what uses would be allowed, or what the standards would be as they start to put together their site plans, so they know what parameters within, within which they can work. If it has 75-foot setbacks or 10-foot setbacks, that can make a big difference on a site plan. So we do have conversations on a regular basis with a number of people, a lot of times on projects that don't come to fruition, and we're just providing information. So until we actually get an application before us, a complete application for development of the site, as far as we are concerned, it's not, nothing is happening.
Yeah, yep, okay. All right, thank you.
Just one final comment regarding the process. So this has gone before the Planning Commission. They've done their diligence, and I see they unanimously have recommended this for council.
Correct, correct. Before any development can occur on the site, site plan reviews would be needed, would be needed. That is a public process. Any zoning to consolidate the parcels or subdivide them into a plat, that's a public process. That would go through a public hearing as well. This is not the first time, or, excuse me, this is not the last time this subject property would be before the Planning Commission or the City Council.
Thank you. All right, with that, any other questions or comments? Would anyone like to move their recommended action?
I can make a motion to adopt an ordinance amending the city of Rosemount zoning map for the subject property from AG Agriculture to B to Employment.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion by Essler, second by Freski. Roll, please.
Kemple?
Aye.
Wiesensel?
Aye.
Freski?
Aye.
Essler?
Aye.
That passes 4-0 on item 6E and completes the consent agenda. Move on to item number seven, public hearings this evening. We have a request by Independent School District 196 for rezoning, conditional use permit preliminary and final plats, site plan and building design review, and a zoning ordinance text amended to allow for a school with various sports fields and play areas to be built on site.
All right, Mr. Mayor and the council. So a little bit of an overview of the requests. So the applicant is requesting the following approvals to construct a new school on a 75.6 acre site south of 150th Street West or County Road 42 and east of Biscayne Avenue. So the request are text amendment to the zoning ordinance, which would revise Section 1110-2 use definitions to include a middle school definition, and revise sections 1132, 1142, and 1173 to include the added middle school use. And then they also are requesting preliminary and final plats, rezoning of the site from A2 agricultural to R3 medium-density residential, and then also a conditional use permit. The Planning Commission did review their site plan review and building design standards, which they did approve, and that was the final action for the Planning Commission. So that is why that request is not in front of council. So a little bit overview over the site location. So like I had mentioned, the site is located south of County Road 42 and east of Biscayne Avenue. It is over a portion of University of Minnesota-owned land and is 75 acres in size. So a little overview of the rezoning requests. So the applicant is requesting that site be rezoned to R3 medium-density residential. The future land use designation for the area is a mixture of low-density residential and medium-density residential, which you can see outlined on the right-hand side due to that area having a larger MDR designation. Staff is recommending that R3 medium-density rezoning of the site. A little overview of the preliminary and final plats. The applicant is requesting the plats for Rosemount School District 5th Edition. The proposed plat shows a total of the site to contain 75.5 acres of the land south of County Road 42 and east of Biscayne Avenue. The plat shows that there's two buildable lots, as well as two outlots. So the main lot, one, will consist of 59.7 acres of land, which is where the school and sports facilities will be located. And then Lot 2, which is located directly north of the Boulder Trail Extension, which you can kind of see outlined on the south part of the parcel, is planned for future city lift station. Then Outlet A will be 5.1 acres in size and will contain various easement areas, which is located on the northwest side of the property, close to County Road 42. And then Outlet B will consist of 2.6 acres of land, which is dedicated right away for the future extension of Boulder Trail, which you can see is located on the southeast portion of the plat. So the proposed text amendment, text amendment in front of you. So back in June of 2024, the updated zoning code and map proposal went before council and for the approval for adoption. Many of those changes made within the city code, within the zoning code, which included changes and additions to the definitions chapter. In the previous code, elementary schools, middle schools, secondary schools were all identified uses, but in the newly adopted code, it only shows elementary schools as a conditional use within residential zoning districts, and also as a permitted use within the public and institutional zoning district, but did not identify middle schools. Staff, in consultation with the city's consultant team, had initially recommended that elementary school definition to be altered to include specific primary education grades, but after the Planning Commission's review of it, they did advise city staff to add an additional middle school definition to include within the city code. So you can see the proposed definition outlined right here under the bold proposed definition. So that definition will outline building use for the purpose of public or private middle school education, as defined in Minnesota State Statue 128.05, including special needs education, which meets all the requirements of compulsory education laws in the state of Minnesota and not providing residential accommodations. And then also mentioned earlier, this will also be revised in sections 1132, 1142, and 1173 to include that middle school definition within those portions of the city code. Little overview of the site plan. So the site will contain the main school building with two main parking lot areas and a service lot area. So you can see that the school is shown to be in the central western area on site. That main lot's going to be located to the northwest of the main school building, and then that bus lot's going to be located to the southeast. And that service lot is directly southwest of the main building. There are also baseball fields, practice fields, and softball fields, and also a tennis court shown throughout the site. There are ponding and infiltration areas on site that are shown to be located south of that bus area and also north of that future Boulder Trail Extension. The proposed building will have a capacity to hold 1,350 students with plans for 47 homeroom classrooms. And then the plan submitted with the school building show a combination of classrooms, common space, gymnasium, pool, performance, stage, media center, et cetera. And they do have a plan to have the school open by fall of 2027. A little overview of the access and parking. So like I had mentioned, they have those two main parking lots and as well as that service lot. So there will be one main access into the site, which is off of Boulder Trail, which will extend north. And then they do split east to west. The split to the east will be for the main bus lot and then additional parking. And then that access road will continue north to the main lot, and then will loop around, and then they will exit through that main access into Boulder Trail as well. And then also, this middle school site has a network of sidewalks, trails, providing access internally and around the site as well. So you can see sidewalks on the south side of County Road 42, and then also gives access to all the sports facilities around the site as well. Little overview of the traffic. So staff did receive a traffic study from the applicant in July, which includes existing conditions on the site, traffic forecasts, traffic analysis, and conclusions and recommendations. So the study did examine weekday AM and PM peak hour traffic impacts of the proposed project. At multiple intersections, that would be impacted by the school site. The study also included a review of pedestrian and bicycle connection impacts related to the proposed project. That traffic study was included as an attachment with this item. Area improvements were identified, which included installing traffic signal controls at County Road 42 and Biscayne Avenue, providing separate turn lanes through and right turn lanes on the westbound approach for Biscayne Avenue and Boulder Trail, providing dedicated eastbound left turn lanes and dedicated westbound right turn lanes on Boulder Trail, and providing two exiting lanes with one left turn one and one right turn lane. A little overview of the landscaping. So the applicant worked with staff to update the landscape plan. That was one issue when this item went forward to the Planning Commission, was the landscaping deficit. So the original landscape plan had 466 trees provided on site. The updated landscape plan now has an additional 106 trees added, which brings the total to 100, or 555 trees on site. This does bring the site closer to the 866 minimum tree requirement. So under the landscaping screening and buffering standard in the zoning code, there is a section outlined for fee in lieu of tree replacement or replacement trees planted in public areas. In this section, it does state that the city recognizes that there are instances where a total amount of tree replacement required cannot occur on site. And the city can accept either a fee in lieu of a replacement or allowing planting on trees in public areas. Since schools are viewed as public areas, the city would allow for part of the landscaping deficit on the middle school site to be made up on the tree count on the newly approved. elementary school site because of that standard. They did have a large amount of access over on the elementary school site, so that's why we were allowing for that deficit as they do meet that count on the elementary school site. And then a few architectural elevations. So the building elevation plans that were submitted by the applicant shows the exteriors of the principal building will be a mixture of brick, precast walls, panels, and metal panels. And I'll show a few renderings as well. Here was a submitted floor plan showing the mixture of classrooms, gymnasium, media area, pool area, and other classrooms. And here are some of the renderings that were submitted by the applicant as well panning around the site. This is looking northeast area with the tennis courts in view. And then here is looking north from the bus lot towards the middle school. And then conditional use permit is required for elementary, middle schools within the R3 low density residential zoning district. The city may approve the CUP upon finding that the use at the proposed location meets the eight standards, which staff did determine that the school did meet those eight requirements. Then there are four motions in front of the city council today. A motion to approve the text amendment, a motion to adopt resolution approving preliminary and final plats, a motion to adopt an ordinance amending, the ordinance B, City of Rosemount zoning ordinance to change the zoning, and then a motion to adopt a resolution approving a CUP for the middle school. At this time, I can't take any questions that the council may have, and I do know that there are also representatives with the school district here as well.
Open up the floor for questions.
Yeah, so we're, as I'm sure everyone is, we're excited about it. Do have a question on some of the recreation opportunities. So just to make sure I'm understanding what the plan includes. It looks like there's four fields, so for football, lacrosse, and soccer. That's what I think I saw, right? You've got inside the track, next to the track, and then two over by the baseball field. So four fields used for football, lacrosse, soccer, rugby potentially, three baseball fields. Do you know how many lanes on the track there will be and what quality? And again, maybe this question for the school district, but what's the quality of the track going to be?
I would maybe defer to the school district on that.
Okay, and then the basketball courts? Are they two full size so they would allow for practicing for four teams? Do you want to do it as we go or? It doesn't matter. Is that okay? We can have them?
Get your questions off.
The pool, I've got questions on the pool in terms of if we're going to be able to use it for competitions like we do at the current middle school. And then I just got a question on the trees for you probably.
Yep.
So it sounds like we're treating two separate projects, looking at them combined. Just curious, I know it's the same, it's the same owner developer with being 196, but is that normal that we would do that?
So no, this is definitely a unique circumstance in that aspect. So kind of a little overview. So back when the elementary school came forward earlier this year, it was under our old zoning code. With our old zoning code, there were no landscaping minimum requirements for projects within the PI district. And schools, we look at them, though they have a zoning of residential, we look at their standards under the public and institutional standards, just because they more follow under that. So there were no landscaping requirements for that, so the elementary school did not have a requirement for landscaping. They did have an excess of trees on-site though, because there were a lot of buffering around the railroad that they didn't have to take down. And so they did end up planting 311 trees on that site, but they still exceeded over 1,000 trees on-site. So again, with that fee in lieu, we could either take that fee in lieu or plant them in a public area. And since 866 trees was a hard requirement for the school district to meet on this site, it was a best of both worlds in being able to allow for that existing count on that elementary school site on this site, since both of them are both owned by the school district as well.
Okay, so just in the spirit of a fair compromise, that's where you landed? Okay. Okay, yep, I just got, if I can get the, I can get you up there again. So as you probably are aware, I mean, fields, courts, rinks, everything's a high premium, comes at a high premium, especially in a growing community like ours. Every opportunity we want to take to get more facilities for our residents, we're quickly, as you guys are fully aware, we're growing quickly and we're running out of space, we're running out of courts, we're running out of, we're running out of facilities. So I just really have a lot of questions around making sure that we're taking every opportunity with this facility. And if there's, if there is an opportunity where we can partner with, where you can partner with the city, where we can even get more facilities out of there, I'd love to just pursue that. We're three years away from, from, from opening the facility. So just wanted to have, just have some questions around that. So just making sure. So on the fields, it looks like football, lacrosse, soccer, all three sports would be able to play on the four fields that we've got?
Yeah, let me introduce myself. I'm Dave Ray with Bolton and Make, civil engineer for the project. So I do everything on the outside design. Our office is in Plymouth, Minnesota. I'll answer your outside questions. So the, I think you had a question on the running track to start with, if I remember correctly.
Yep.
It's designed as an eight lane running track. The surfacing will not be a resilient surfacing like you would see at the typical high school site. It would be an ag lime surfacing. So ag lime is the same material that's used on softball field, infield, baseball field infield, and that sort of thing. And that's consistent with the other middle schools in the district. However, we are setting this project up so that if that was something that the district wanted to modify in the future, they could work from the ground up versus having to, you know, dig out a lot of soils and have a lot of expense in the future. So we're setting it up for flexibility in the future, if that makes sense.
Yeah, and just ballpark, what's the, what's the, what's the delta in cost in one surface versus the other?
Yeah, I don't know. The resilient surfacing is, just the surfacing is a hundred thousand, a couple hundred thousand dollars. And there's the asphalt pavement, which is another, you know, it might be a half a million dollars. Again, don't, you're, I'm doing the best I can on that one, but it's, there's quite a delta in the, in the.
The reason the track is important is because the high school is getting overly used. It's, it's, it's hard to, for RAAA track, I mean, again, they're growing. There's one RAAA association back when I was on the, running, on the board. It's continued to grow and it's getting much larger. It's getting more difficult to get access to the high school track. So if we had another track that we could get access to and be able to use, you know, if RAAA could use that, they've obviously become accustomed to using the, the surface at the high school. But now if they end up having to relocate over to the middle school to do their track meets, it's going to be a little bit of a different experience.
Yeah.
So I'm wondering would the, I guess the school district ever consider looking at that, you know, again, that, that becoming the primary youth track facility?
Honestly, that's a better question for the district. That's a better question for the district, but I can say that it is set up for flexibility in the future, so. Okay.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Sal Bagley with Wald Architects and Engineers. So actually, that very topic has been a little bit discussed lately. So the district is always trying to balance kind of consistency and experience across all of the middle schools with all of the things that you just said. We also have a whole series of projects as a part of the bond referendum. We want to make sure that we can responsibly deliver on all of those promises across all of the communities.
True.
So before we give a kind of a want or maybe an above and beyond a one, we do have to get through a very significant volume of bidding in the next six, eight months.
Okay.
Right, we have all four high school projects. We, so we're really excited to get through this gate check.
Yep.
And if the district's in the happy position, you know, a year, two year, three years from now, where more things can be done.
Okay.
I, it's already on a list, I guess is what I can say. So I can't say either way, like, yes, we're going to do that or no. But you're, you're right in line with the conversations.
Somebody at the school district has flagged this as a possible want.
Yeah.
For, given our needs, okay.
Absolutely, so. I completely commiserate with what you're talking about.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, I didn't mean to take over what you're talking about.
And again, again, not, not to beat a dead horse here, but if you, if you look at, when I was on the RAAA board, a lot of times we worked with the school district, sometimes we had to really encourage them to look at the differences between the four different high schools. What's different about us is, and they know this, but we're growing quickly. And the uniqueness is, if you look at Eagan, Apple Valley, and Eastview, those three aren't getting the pressure on the track.
Sure.
That we are because of the numbers we've got.
Sure, I can appreciate that.
Want to make sure that we don't, you know, use a cookie cutter approach on the four high schools, that there is some uniquenesses to the different communities.
Yeah.
And just want to make sure that's recognized.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Awesome, thank you for that. Okay, do you want to, which one do you want to cover next? Baseball?
Basketball.
I'll cover the baseball, yeah, since we're on the site.
I got them all.
Remind me of your question. I remember you did mention three baseball.
So there's, it looks like there's four fields, just making sure that they can be used for football, lacrosse, and soccer?
They are sized for all of those athletics events, yes, correct.
Full, four, full, four full size for all the sports?
All identical, yes.
Uh, the baseball fields, what age, you know, given the outfield, like what, what, what age can these be used for games?
Yep, so clarification, there's one baseball.
Heidi knows this better than I do, so.
Clarification, there's one baseball and two softball, just for clarification. So the baseball is in the, on this diagram is in the middle of where it says north. That is the baseball field, and that is sized for high school athletics.
High school.
Yep, that, that age group, up to that age group.
Okay.
The two softball fields are flexible. Again, it could be grade seven and eight, it can be high school. Again, because of this overlap, there's no really defined outfield, so it can be flexible use for.
Like for youth sports, it could be used for youth baseball.
Yes.
Potentially, right?
For sure, for sure.
You good, Heidi? Because you're the one that knows this better.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, um, let's see, and then I also, moving to indoors, two full-size basketball courts? You're the indoor guy.
It's a team effort, so maybe I'll get back to the floor plan so we can get there. Here we go.
I'm Aaron Ossing with Wald Architects, worked with Sal, project manager for the project. So yes, correct, there are two competition-sized NFHS standard-sized courts for basketball inside that include volleyball courts on either side.
Okay, so they can be used, really four different teams could practice than half courts?
Correct. Yep, and they have divider curtains in between them, and actually for PE use have them so they can divide them into kind of four quadrants.
Yep.
With curtains.
And was there any discussion or consideration of having a third?
What I would say to that is that we have a total amount of square footage that we worked closely with the building administration to make sure we could achieve all of the goals.
Okay.
So this was kind of the, the end outcome of that, of making sure that we get academics, athletics, and performance based, so.
Yep, okay.
Yep.
And then the pool, I'm assuming it'll have the same ability as the existing middle school to host competitions then?
Yes, correct. Yep, it'll have all the same kind of scoreboards, timing systems.
Bleachers and?
Yep, built-in bleachers, elevated bleachers, team seating.
Okay.
All, it'll be a brand-new stadium.
The intention will be then that'll become the Rosemount location for competitive, yep, swimming and diving.
Yep.
Okay. I think that's, that's it on my questions, thank you.
You mentioned swimming and diving, is there a diving well associated with this?
It is not a separate diving well. It is similar to the current Rosemount where it's one basin that has integral diving.
None above and beyond those. These aren't for you guys, but thank you for your answers. My question's for you around traffic. I just want to make sure I understand that we do have a commitment from the county to put in a four-way or the stoplight at County Road 42 in Biscayne.
I can maybe jump in on that, councilor. I, I want to hesitate to say the word commitment because the signal that is recommended and and all of that is still something the county board has to approve on their capital improvements plan. I don't, I'm not worried about that not happening, but it's an official action they have to take at the end of the year when they update their CIP plan. So between city staff, county staff, school district, we're all on the same page in terms of what is, what we're understanding needs to be done and will be done there. And the delivery of that project would be prior to the opening of the school. So seems to be aligning properly there. There's a lot of work left to do to design all this stuff and to figure out cost splits and physical impacts and those sorts of things, but we're diving into that as we speak.
So I know the county has their, their timeline and the process they follow. In order to meet that timeline, I know three years sounds a long time, but design, I think, takes at least a year usually. When do we need the county board's blessing to ensure that we're going to meet the date?
I, I think that comes with that CIP plan.
And that is this December?
Yep, that's late this year.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
One follow-up, they mentioned the lights, the surface crosswalks and things like that. Is there anything else that's being considered in that location? I think during some discussions, I recall maybe an underpass trail or something being considered. Is that happening or where is that right now?
That, the process of looking at that closely is just going to begin in 2025 in terms of feasibility for that, where it might be possible to cross underneath the county highway, what sorts of things would be needed to facilitate that. Really, the book hasn't been opened too much yet. It was a bit of a later revelation in feedback that we got and discussions with the county along the way with the traffic study.
It seems like there's a great opportunity there for, for safety and, you know, the amount of traffic or foot traffic that may go through there with, with 42. So we know you're on it. Finding that out, all right. Any other questions or comments for staff for the school district? All right, we'll take this time then to, if I understand this right, we're just opening up the floor for the zoning ordinance text amendment. All right, it's not about any of the rest of the motions that are on there. So the floor is open for comments to be received on the zoning ordinance text amendment, basically the middle school definition. Anyone wishing to speak on that may do so at this time. Please come forward to the podium, state your name and address and your comment. Zoning ordinance text amendment. Seeing no one making a fast move to the podium, we'll consider the public hearing closed, and we'll start moving to motions. Each of us want to take a motion?
Sure.
Go ahead and start.
I'll make a motion to approve a zoning ordinance text amendment revising section 11-10-1, use definitions to include a middle school definition and to revise sections 10-10-11-10-2, uses 11-4-2, uses and 11-7-3, off-street parking and loading standards to include the added middle school use.
Second.
We got a motion by Freski, second by Klimpel. Roll, please.
Weisensel.
Aye.
Freski.
Aye.
Essler.
Aye.
Klimpel.
Aye.
First motion, four zero is approved. The second motion.
Oh, I can make a motion to adopt a resolution approving the preliminary and final plats for Rosemount School District 5th Edition, subject to all conditions approved as part of the city's site and building design review for the project.
I'll second that. Motion by Essler, second by Weisensel. Roll, please.
Freski.
Aye.
Essler.
Aye.
Klimpel.
Aye.
Weisensel.
Aye. Completes the second motion, four zero. Third motion.
I'll make a motion to adopt an ordinance amending ordinance B, City of Rosemount zoning ordinance to change the zoning of the site from A2 agricultural to R3 medium density residential.
I'll second.
Motion by Klimpel, second by Freski. Roll, please.
Essler.
Aye.
Klimpel.
Aye.
Weisensel.
Aye.
Freski.
Aye.
Completes the third motion, four zero. And the fourth motion, move to adopt a resolution approving a conditional use permit for middle school to be located on the Rosemount School District 5th Edition.
Second.
Motion by Weisensel, second by Essler. Roll, please.
Klimpel.
Aye.
Weisensel.
Aye.
Freski.
Aye.
Essler.
Aye.
Completes the fourth motion, four zero. Thank you very much. Can you speak to the next actions regarding any of this, Ms. Hogan? That would come before council, anything else?
Not with this request.
All right, so we're, we're done with it.
Yeah.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yep, go ahead.
Sorry, I should have asked this earlier.
Sorry, I should've asked this earlier. Question for the applicant. How are you going to communicate out, like, these renderings and all that kind of information to the public? Or when? When and how?
We know everybody watches this religiously, but maybe there's a few people that missed it.
I'm Mark Stotts with the school district. Um, so we do have a website dedicated to the referendum projects, and, um, I can't recall if the renderings are on those projects that, but they've been included in presentations that we've been giving and so forth, and, and so if they aren't on the website, first thing I will do tomorrow is to make sure they get put there.
Okay.
Um, but yeah, we're really excited about this project and really proud of the planning and the work that's happened up to this point, so.
Thank you.
Is there, like, a project icon or anything when they go to the thing to find it or they have to search for it?
I think it just refers to referendum projects.
Referendum, okay.
Yep.
Great.
And we have many referendum projects going on, as you all know. So, uh, elementary schools moving, moving along, if you haven't driven up there. Footings are in, foundation is going in, um, and it's starting to look like a building, so we're, we're really happy.
And just a reminder, that'll open what season?
Uh, that'll open fall of 2025.
Fall 2025, so next fall. Good. Thank you.
Getting stuff?
Yeah, thank you, Council.
Thank you.
So that completes our public hearings for this evening. We'll move to item eight unfinished business, which we have none. New business, request by QuickTrip for approval of a conditional use permit. I think there's a lot of residents waiting on this.
Oh, yes. We're very excited.
Mr. Van Oss, can you share the update?
Yes. Um, so we have, um, QuickTrip, uh, has applied, uh, last month to, uh, construct a, oh, this is the wrong presentation. Well, I can, I can work with it. Um, QuickTrip, uh, is requesting a, uh, requested a final site and building plan, uh, and a conditional use permit for a new gas station, um, near the Akron intersection, um, where a lot of our developments have been happening. They're planning to construct an 11,000-square-foot convenience store, a single bay, detached car wash, and then a automobile fuel station, um, on the almost five-acre site. Uh, here's the site. It's right on the, uh, intersection in the northwest quadrant, kind of right south of where the Roar's apartment project is going in. As I said, the site is, uh, 4.79 acres. It's, uh, designated community commercial. Um, the store will be in the southern, kind of mid-southern portion of the site. Uh, the, uh, gas canopy and fuel stations will be directly north of that, um, and the car wash will be on the east side. There'll be, uh, five total pump stations, um, as you can see here. To, in terms of site access, um, there will be a access through a new private road to the north that will run between the site and the Roar's apartment project. That'll be the main access into the site. Um, there'll also be a shared, uh, drive aisle with the, uh, newly, uh, broke ground, uh, daycare to the east. Um, that will be used primarily by people exiting the car wash, um, to help with, uh, circulation of the site. So here's a kind of larger photo of access and where this private road will be. A lot of this is not actually relevant to you, so I'll move on. Um, this is the building. I'm, I'm sure we're all pretty familiar with the QuickTrip style. It will look very similar to the one currently in town. It'll just be a larger format. Um, and here's the car wash, similar building construction. Uh, so last month, there was a public hearing for this item. Uh, there was no, uh, comments received. Uh, the planning commission approved the PUD, uh, final site and building plan. Uh, so the only item up tonight is the, uh, conditional use permit for the site. So for the conditional use permit, there are seven general standards. Uh, this application meets them all. Um, there are also 12 specific standards, uh, for fuel stations, uh, just oven in themselves. Uh, there are two items that they did not meet. One was for the stacking of the gas pumps, uh, showing them on the plans, and the second one was for the, uh, the width between pump islands. Uh, this was largely due to the change in our code. Uh, their plans had been, being made prior to our adoption of the code, but they were submitted after the new code, um, so we just asked them to bring it into compliance with, uh, those new standards. They've indicated that that, uh, should not be a problem, and they will submit those plans, uh, prior to pulling any building permits for the, uh, for the project. Uh, that's largely the presentation. The applicant is here if you want to ask them any questions, um, but we are recommending approval, um, ignore the first one, but we're, uh, recommending approval for, uh, the second item for the conditional use permit.
See that?
This was from the planning commission. Um, so you can ignore.
Just the second one?
Just the second motion.
Okay.
You can ignore the first one.
All right, fine. Uh, floor is open to council. Any questions for staff? For?
You can go ahead first.
Um, just if you can go back to the previous slide. So the two, the two, um, exceptions, how, how did we get comfortable with those?
Um, they're not exceptions. I'm sorry. We're asking them to amend the plans to bring it into compliance. Uh, their, the plans they submitted showed, um, they would have been in compliance under the old code.
Okay.
With the new code, they are not, so we just asked them to make those minor changes.
And they've agreed.
And they agreed, yes.
Yep. To meet, so there'll, there'll be no exceptions then?
Yep, it'll be completely within compliance of the, uh, conditional use permit standards.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, thank you.
Um, can you go back to the slide where it showed, um, the entry, entry into the QuickTrip? So in my understanding, you can't get to it from Akron. You have to take the Conamara?
Uh, the private road, uh, yes. Uh, it's a 145?
Forty-four.
Nine, 149. Uh, it'll be a private road, so you'll have to turn in off of Akron, um, or Abbey Fieldway to the west, um, and you can approach the site from this road there.
Is there a different map that would show that better?
Um, so, the new road will kind of run from here to here. Um, so you will not be able to get to it from 42 or Akron. This will be the main road, but there are multiple approaches to that private road.
I'm not following, cause your mouse had you at Akron, so.
Oh.
I think when you say get to it from Akron, I mean, you, you can't turn directly into the parking lot from Akron.
Yeah.
But you just, you hang a right, um, onto that little road there.
So, so.
Turn onto the private street.
If you look at this, uh, this map, so the private road in the very top right corner will be accessible from Akron, but that's a shared drive aisle between all the developments within here. Um, and then the access to the site will actually be right here from that private road, and then also here from the.
And that road extends, Eric, down to the bank, right, and then the future daycare as well, right?
Correct.
So that's how you're getting to the bank, that's how you're getting to the daycare.
So, so my only concern is I don't want to create a situation where we have on Highway Three where Clover and Starbucks is, where there's only one way in and one way out, and it's really hard for patrons of those businesses to frankly get in, get in and out of there. I feel like we're creating the same situation here. Tell me I'm not. Tell.
Yeah, I.
All right, you gotta come over here.
Is there an extra way out here?
Yeah, go ahead, Nick, I'm.
There's.
I apologize. I haven't figured it out yet exactly, what, what the, what the way in and out is going to be. Cause I, are, are, are you saying there's no way to get on there direct, in, into the, into the parking lot from Akron?
Correct.
And if you want to get to 42, you gotta go past it and backtrack on Akron?
So, you know where the Roar's apartment building is?
Yes.
Okay, so there's a road that goes from Abbey Field to Akron that will, that will be the access to every commercial site.
That's the road on the north side of this picture right here.
On the north side. This will run all the way past the bank, past the daycare.
The aerial might be better if you pop back to the aerial.
It's, it's there.
So, all those commercial sites will be accessible from that private road there. From, and so you can approach it from Abbey Field Avenue or Akron. There'll be two entrance exits.
If you want to get there from 42, you gotta go down to Abbey Field and then come back. No.
No, you can take Akron.
Or you can take Akron.
Take Akron, and there's a turn in from that.
Coming off of Akron to the top of the site.
Private road there from Akron.
It cuts through the entire site.
Okay. So is there any concerns, I guess, when the applicant gets up? Any concerns of the access for you guys in terms of what's, what's being required?
Well, he comes up to the one difference Councilman Freski might throw out is a difference, thinking with Starbucks, right, is that folks going westbound to Apple Valley, let's say, or to Highway Three, would likely go down to Abbey Field, take an easy right-hand turn onto Highway 42 and get going on highway speeds very quickly. So there's, there's, you can exit from both sides, enter and exit from both sides.
Okay, that's what I was missing, is there's two.
I, I think, um, to answer your question, no, we're not concerned. So Dean George, I'm.
Who are you?
Yeah, Dean George speaking on behalf of QuickTrip. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, we're not concerned, and I think the congestion probably is not a concern for us, cause you cannot make a left out onto Akron. So half the traffic that goes back to the houses that head north have to use upper, whatever, that private road to get back to Abbey Field to go up to Conamara Trail. So it is, it kind of splits your traffic naturally that way anyway, because it is only a three-quarter movement onto Akron from our site.
Okay. Okay.
Since, since we have you up here, what is the, um, timeline for this?
Uh, break ground March 10th, finalized construction August 8th, probably open store August 17th is, I think, the tentative timeline.
That's pretty specific. Thank you.
Pending no snow.
Pending no snow, pending some stuff, manipulating the schedule. It'll be next summer sometime, whenever the final dates get set in. It's expected to be open sometime before the fall.
Thank you.
Yep.
And for the, uh, I think there's been a, uh, some chatter about the current QuickTrip site in downtown. As of right now, there is, anything that you can say about that particular site?
Uh, that site will remain in open, in effect. Will still be, will operate at both. That site, as I said, the planning commission, that site's too small for us to do anything to, and we service too many people there already, so we can't accommodate any of the new growth on this end of Rosemount, so. New location will, will fit in nicely.
And the car wash is going to have the option of touch free or the gentle touch?
It will. So, so.
I'd go specifically to QuickTrip because of it. I do.
Perfect. So this, this site's gonna look exactly like the one we just rebuilt, uh, in all 55, all the way down to the detached car wash look. So it's the same, same size, same square footage, detached car wash. You just don't have Diesel Island here.
Yeah, that's awesome, cause I, I seriously find the QuickTrips because of that.
Glad to hear it. Glad to hear it. Thank you, guys.
Anything else? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, it's all down to the buttons. All right. With that, uh, anyone wish to move the motion to approve the conditional use permit?
I'll make a motion to approve a conditional use permit allowing an automobile fuel station located at Lot 1, Block 2, Prestwick Place 24th Edition, subject to the conditions in the resolution.
I'll second.
Have a motion by Freski, second by Klimpel. Roll, please.
Weisensel?
Aye.
Freski?
Aye.
Essler?
Aye.
Klimpel?
Aye.
And that passes four zero. Thank you very much. Next item up, we've been waiting all evening for this.
For the gentle touch.
And Logan is excited to go through it all again.
We are breathlessly waiting establishing our preliminary 2025 budget levy.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Uh, per the usual, we stack the agenda with, uh, the exciting things, and then, then the folks empty out. But this is an exciting night for Tia and I certainly, uh, but city staff and certainly council, too. Uh, we've been working on the budget for many, many months. Appreciate the support from you, council, the leadership from the council to get us to where we are tonight, which is establishing the ceiling, uh, for the city's 2025 budget and our levy. Um, and then as folks know that have been paying attention, certainly as council knows, right, so tonight we call it the ceiling. All we can do from here is come down, uh, on the levy as we, uh, discuss more with council, a few more chances, or at least one more chance at a work session, um, likely in November to talk about this with council, with any feedback they've received from residents between now and then. Um, and then also, um, as we get some more refinement on a few pending, uh, items that are in the budget, um, as placeholders that we, that we're still looking to shake out. So looking to set the ceiling tonight, that's the action for you tonight, and I will do the fairly traditional presentation here as we walk through where we've come, uh, and where we're going, and kind of how this aligns with the city's strategic, strategic plan. So first, some headlines from this budget. Um, I think there's no surprise to anybody. We continue to have record-breaking growth, uh, in the value of our new construction, and so this is a bullet from last year, and it's an, again, a bullet from this year, and it's, we've, we surpassed last year, um, fairly significantly, and, uh, the spoiler alert is that 2026, uh, valuation will, for payable 2020, or 2020, 2025 valuation payable for '26 is certainly going to spoil, uh, and break the record that we're currently setting here, uh, for, for the budget of 2025. Um, our tax capacity valuation increased by 5.43%, which is a reflection of our growth, and then also a little bit of a softening of the value picture, um, across the residential, certainly a landscape and some commercial industrial softening as well, which we'll talk about. So that specific number, 177 million in new construction value is absolutely a record watermark for us. Comparables in 2019, 47 million, which is a fairly good year for us still. 2022, post-COVID, 138 million, record at the time. Here we are in 2023, payable 2024, uh, setting 177 million in new construction value. So new things built valued a total at 177 million. We'll talk here on the next slide, uh, what that means for how much that quote-unquote saves folks on their taxes as we're looking at this tonight. So that 177 million equates to about $2 million in tax capacity value, or, or capacity that we can actually levy taxes against. So that saved a homeowner in a median-valued home $72 on their taxes. And so the tax increase that we're asking you to set a ceiling for tonight is $85. That tax increase would have been $157, uh, in the same budget without that 177 million in, 177 million in new construction growth. So really, um, a, a huge headline that we like to remind people of and get the questions of what about all those new folks on the east side of town? What are, what are they doing to lift the weight? And then that's the answer, is that if we didn't have a single thing growing or added, your taxes would have increased by an additional $72, which really means we wouldn't have brought that kind of a budget to the city council, uh, because that would be too large of a tax increase, frankly, just on what the council has given us for parameters. So we wouldn't have been able to accomplish what we're accomplishing inside this budget. So, um, as an example, uh, in 2023, $32 was saved by new growth. Um, so this is a big number, uh, to have folks quote-unquote saving on their tax increase. Um, that final bullet there, in, in previous years, when we've had a larger valuation growth of a median-valued home, that's been a, a good thing to call out, to say, um, what would have happened to your tax picture had your valuation on your single-family home, for example, not changed? This year, our median-valued home is actually decreasing by 0.74%, um, which is, which is rare in, in looking, ever since I've been here, this is the eighth budget that I've worked on. We've never seen a median-valued home actually decrease in valuation. And again, as we've talked about, that's kind of that reflective picture, looking backwards on valuations, um, as, as the county assessor sets a baseline for our median-valued home. And, and so this is the catch-up of kind of the COVID slowdown. This is the catch-up of, uh, mortgage interest rates slowing down the market, and so that's why we're at that 0.74% decrease. And so if that home is paying an $85 tax increase, if that home's value stayed flat, their increase would be $96. Um, so again, encourage folks, they're about, they'll get this fall their property tax notification from Dakota County. That'll tell them exactly what their home is assessed at, which they would have been told about, by the way, um, in early 2024, February or so, they get a valuation notice. So you should know what your valuation is doing, how it's changing, and then that, that your tax picture then is driven by, by that change. So a little overview as we dive in, uh, a, a total operating budget increase of 11.59% for the draft 2025 budget. Uh, to fund that, or to operate that budget results in a 10.90% levy increase, which is about $1.799 million levy increase, which is the combination of our general fund and our debt service levy. And so as we've talked about now for the second or second year in a row, I believe, um, our public works and police campus is flatlined at a 4.5% approximately debt levy increase or impact every year. Numbers don't exactly shake out if you're looking at that, uh, those first couple of pages of your budget document, but it's essentially flatlined, uh, to be that, that number, which again is about flatlined to be about a $45 impact to a homeowner. So then the budget that you're seeing tonight that the city is operating on is a $40 increase to the median-valued homeowner, and then $45 increase to the median-valued homeowner approximately to fund the public works campus. So an all-in budget, or excuse me, an all-in levy tax increase for a median-valued homeowner of $85 tonight. So making their city taxes 1383 in '25 as compared to 1298 in 2024. Of course, you guys know to stop me with any questions, so please do that. Uh, process, uh, like I said, residents are notified of their preliminary taxable value. We are also notified that in about February. That's that 53.748 million dollar value. That's our tax capacity, or which we can draw taxes upon. That's that 5.43% increase as compared to That's that five-point-four-three percent increase as compared to twenty-twenty-three, um, twenty-twenty-four, excuse me. Like Tia and I say, we never know what year it is, because we're all these future and backwards and forwards, and so it is twenty-twenty-four. Uh, again, the market value of new construction is one-hundred-and-seventy-seven million, um, which is nearly triple twenty-nineteen, was a forty-seven million, or more than triple, excuse me, of twenty-nineteen, which was a forty-seven million dollars in new construction value. So really just, um, astronomical numbers that, um, we, we won't often see, we won't see again, and then that's kind of why, um, we're not, you know, we can't rely on that being our, our year-over-year guarantee, these historic numbers. But we think we have a couple more years left in the tank of historic, historic numbers. Department had submitted their requests, um, Tia and I met with everyone, um, to talk about that numerous times and have worked through that, multiple drafts completed internally. And then, as I mentioned, we have, um, met with council in a number of work sessions to get to where we are tonight. Looking back a little bit, um, some of these numbers are still being updated as we, uh, get full valuation data from Dakota County. Um, but I always show this number, I've got a few more numbers coming in the December budget, but, um, this is one that I think folks have liked to see, just comparing our growth in operations, so about a thirty-six percent growth in operations over a seven or eight-year window. And then in that same window, roughly, we've increased about one-hundred-and-four percent in valuation. Um, and again, I'll update those numbers for twenty-twenty-five, um, as we look forward and come back in, in December. And then I've been calculating, um, on, based on council direction for the past number of years, what a cost per resident is and what a cost per household is. And so showing that growth there, um, over that seven- or eight-year window, um, of what it's, how that number has changed for operating the city on a per-resident and a per-household basis. So, um, again, I think it's reflective of trying to stay really within our means of, of growing, um, budgets and operations, um, in correlation with how we've grown, um, from a valuation standpoint as a community. Pictorial look back here of the, uh, the historical, uh, levy and budget, again, looking all the way back to twenty-fourteen, we're at seven-point-eight-four percent levy growth, uh, budget growth, uh, less than that at six-point-two-five percent. Again, a big picture there, but just looking back to show that from a bar chart. And again, capacity, looking back, um, averaging capacity growth of six-point-six-one percent with some of these years of recent number, or recent memory being significantly, uh, more. And that, for me personally, you know, first budget I worked on was twenty-seventeen, so look back at a, a twenty-eight million-dollar tax capacity, and then we're sitting here today at about a fifty-three million-dollar tax capacity, um, is, is, is a pretty wild change for, for any community and something certainly that I think council should be proud of, uh, in terms of a growth standpoint.
double capacity.
Uh, so, uh, jumping into budget by budget here, city council, um, again, based on council's direction, we have, we have kind of altered this budget to really pull out the things that aren't directly reflective of what the city council does. And so again, seeing a decrease in this budget, pulled out about thirteen thousand dollars and reallocated those funds to administrative services to support our engagement efforts. And so as you'll see when we get to admin services, that supports the work of our communications manager and communications specialist, um, to really double down based on our strategic plan, the city's communication, um, and engagement efforts. As we're growing so quickly, as the council is looking to retain the city's hometown feel, how do we do that? And, and part of that is the council putting their, their money where their mouth is in terms of focusing on that priority, um, and moving money around to support communications even further. And again, like I said, this is the second year, um, of reflecting, of more directly reflecting where budget numbers should be allocated. We artificially went back to twenty-two just to get more of a, or twenty, yeah, twenty-two here to get more of a normal bar chart, but this is the second year that we've updated your guys' budget to, uh, to look at just what the city council actually works on. So admin services then receives the bulk of that slide over, as you'll see in the bar chart, for twenty-twenty-five, we're looking at an eight-point-two-four percent increase. Um, one of the biggest FTE items in there is an information technology specialist. Um, so this is a really important hire for us, both as we grow as an organization, um, and then as we increase our facilities. And so we've got a, a brand-new facility, right, over at PDPW that has frankly more IT than the city hall has. And so how do we manage that building? How do we respond to IT needs at that building? Um, certainly a need for a, a, a third IT employee has arisen. Uh, this budget also sees the full impact of the communication specialist, as I mentioned, that individual started here, uh, back this summer, and so then, of course, the twenty-twenty-five budget has the full freight of that salary. And then, uh, increased cost of IT licenses, this is just another thing that we called out here, um, as we increase all of our spam filters, all the Microsoft costs going to kind of digital, Microsoft Teams, phone systems, Adobe subscriptions, things of that nature, they live in admin services. So there you'll see the jump and kind of looking back at that as we've made, and these aren't new costs, these are the reallocated costs, but make our bar chart look a little bit wonky there. Community development, uh, this is minor year for community development next year, the biggest thing, so six-point-four percent. Uh, the biggest thing, um, is that we talked about at, at work session with council was the need for, um, some third-party assistance on our code, code enforcement, um, pursuits. And so, um, council gave us the direction that the initial amount that we had kind of quoted and budgeted was maybe a bit high, so you'll notice this is a, this is a fifty percent reduction in that number. So we're asking for forty thousand dollars to begin the work of a contracted third-party consultant to assist with code enforcement. The reason why we're comfortable pulling that number down a little bit is that we've got some, uh, positions open in that, in, in, in community development right now that we might be able to retool a little bit to let people do some inspection work and do some code enforcement work. And so we are, we're working on that now, but, but, uh, Mr. Keenberger feels comfortable with that number for a third-party contract, to still give us some horsepower. Um, as council's aware, you get all the emails from residents, we're, we're, you know, and we hear them, we, we, we are, um, you know, stressed by them, pushed by them, et cetera, right? We're getting to be the size of community where, um, code enforcement is just becoming a more and more, uh, regular thing. And, um, we have building inspectors, we have three of them, really, you know, um, that are running and gunning full-time, uh, to do that growth that we talked about a few slides ago. And, and those are the same folks that we have to ask to do code enforcement, and, and we really, they are highly skilled in inspections, um, the, the, we don't need to use their horsepower for code enforcement quite so much. And so there are folks out there that will do code enforcement for us and, and looking to, uh, to, to, to start dabbling into that. Could transition that into a full-time employee, could transition that into, into a deeper reliance on a, on a consultant, we're just not certain yet, but this will be the first year of kind of beta testing that. So a visual there, uh, this has been a fairly flat budget for us throughout the years, four-point-six percent, um, looking all the way back to twenty-seventeen. Police department budget, um, our biggest budget in the city, um, has been for many years, and that won't change. Uh, a twelve-point-seven-seven percent increase, um, for twenty-twenty-five, um, obviously it's always about staffing inside of police. And so we have two FTE police officers next year. Um, what you'll see there is that one-hundred-and-seventy-thousand-dollar budget impact number is reduced by about a hundred thousand dollars from two grants, a grant that we received to fund two officers for the, the police department next year. So Chief Dalstrom, um, wrote and, and was awarded, uh, an IC Poet Grant, which is a career transitions program for police. Think you guys have heard about that? One of our officers that we recently, uh, introduced to the council is one of those employees. So this allows folks that might have a four-year degree in another field to go back for shortened, um, training, and then, and then ultimately become police officers. And so, um, critical thing, really, really nice program that allows us, like I said, to attract maybe a more diverse skillset in the police department, different folks that maybe hadn't originally thought of police, that come with some life experience that have been out in the workforce for a while. So excited to continue building the department, and like I say here, that allows us to build the department, excuse me, maybe a bit faster than we would have, um, been able to otherwise, like I said, with the, with the amount of levy increase that we're comfortable bringing into council. So getting that grant allows us to get two next year. Uh, we, we likely wouldn't have been able to ask for two next year, um, especially just with all the other things going on within the department, um, uh, and such. So, and the other employee that we want to talk about is the crime analyst, and so folks on our social media or LinkedIn maybe saw that we've been promoting that lately. Uh, we have final interviews and, and offers underway right now, and so the, we've got the full impact of that person's employment, um, hitting the budget in twenty-twenty-five. But again, so council funded that here in twenty-twenty-four, uh, critical hire for the police department that allows us to, again, begin operating like a police department. Um, you know, we're, we're, we're doing it now, but gives us the horsepower to do, uh, the, what we need to do, uh, for the work that we have in this, this size of community, uh, in terms of understanding what's coming down the pipe from all of our partners that give, uh, data and analysis down our way. Um, and then the fee increases that we always see, so our partners at Dakota nine-on-one, some fee changes there, LexiPo, which is our implementation, uh, for software tracking, policy tracking software, um, so some changes there in, in, uh, in those fees. But those are the buckets I wanted to call out for police. Averaging seven-point-one-three percent, looking back to twenty-seventeen, um, again, this is a, this is a chart that you would see in a growing city where we've been hiring, you know, you've all been around for a while, it's been two or more officers every year, uh, I think since I've been here, just about, um, whether it's an officer or administrative leadership support. So, um, it's, it's, it's just a big job, and like we've talked about, it's one of the, as we see in, uh, in community surveys, one of the most critical things, or the most critical things that residents expect us to do, um, is to, is to keep them safe. Fire, uh, fire is the other, uh, as is everything, with the other very important, critical task that we do. Um, and so a big number here with a big caveat that you'll get to in a second. Um, so we're, we've, we've always talked about, right, that the, uh, the big changes in fire are gonna be coming, um, and we're starting to feel that now, most importantly, with, uh, the full impact of a full-time fire chief. And so, um, we're looking to hire an employee here, uh, October, November. We've got first-round interviews with candidates actually this week. I'm really excited with the results of our recruitment and, and hopeful that that's gonna work out well for the city, um, and something that we can announce to the community here in the next couple of months, is a full-time fire chief. Um, so that budget certainly, uh, is felt, uh, as that person comes on board in twenty-twenty-five and, and has the full freight of their salary. Um, Chief Schroeder has continued to guide us towards, uh, EMT licensure for all the firefighters, so looking to get the entire license, entire department license within three years, so you'll see line item there. Um, and then another thing, and again, I, I should have said, this is Chief Schroeder's really vision on setting up the department and the, the department's budget for, uh, a kind of department budget that a full-time fire chief is going to want to receive. And so these are the things that get us professionalized, um, and, and ready for, for that kind of next step of, of, of professionalism inside the, uh, the fire staffing structure that we have. Certainly, they operate highly professionally, they're very skilled, but I hope you understand what I'm trying to say there. Um, and so one of the things too is, is, um, getting a second set of gear for all firefighters. And so this is a critical thing in the fire service, I think we've talked about this for two or three years now, uh, but it bears repeating that one of the most critical threats to firefighters is the carcinogens that are left on fire suits as they, and gear as they finish fire calls. And so, uh, this allows us to get a second set of gear for, for the firefighters, um, to ensure that if they're on back-to-back calls, um, they can put on a, a clean set of gear before they, they go back out of, of the station. And then new gear sets for our newly hired staff, and we continue to hire, uh, staff in, in a recent pool, I think we had seven or eight. Um, not all of them are able to make it, not all finished training, but we gotta have gear ready for those folks as we, uh, as we bring them on board. So, um, critical work there. Um, again, building, uh, building into the future, we are, we're building a mental health and, and peer support, um, segment of the budget, and so this is the creation of a peer support team, much like what fire departments across the county and, uh, and our police department has done. Also similar to policing, uh, the mental health check-ins for staff. You know, firefighters see, uh, the really hard stuff that police officers see and, and different things too, and so they deserve a mental health check-in, um, in our opinion, just like a police officer does. And, and, uh, you're starting to see PTSD, not starting to see, you're seeing PTSD claims, um, in the fire service already, um, and, and certainly we don't want, uh, any of that happening here in the city of Rosemount. So critical budget item to build there. You saw LexiPo mentioned in police, uh, Chief Schroeder in his day-to-day profession in law enforcement is bringing that guidance over to the fireside and, and encouraging us to use LexiPo for fire, which allows policy consistency, um, and then allows us to continue to professionalize kind of the operations and these standards inside the fire department, so a line item there. And then that, that two-hundred-thousand-dollar line item, so if you look back, so four-fifty-one is the whole change to the budget, two-hundred-thousand of that is an accounting, uh, issue, right, not issue, but an accounting change, where we received fire state aid, um, from the state of Minnesota. Previously, we've left that sit in revenues, and it's not been accounted for in expenditures. The Office of the State Auditor asked us, asked us to account for that in our expenditures as well, so we had to charge ourselves for two-hundred-thousand dollars on the expenditure side. It exists on the revenue side, so it's not impacting your levy or the budget, so that big scary number of sixty-one percent or four-fifty, um, has two-hundred-thousand just pulled right, right out of it. Um, so just want to clarify that, which makes the bar chart look a little silly there too, um, but it is what it is, and we're gonna follow our, our friends at the Office of the State Auditor, um, because we'd like to keep Tia ahead, so, uh, we'll do that. Um, so, uh, that's, that is the fire department budget. Public Works has its three standard, uh, uh, budget, sub-budgets here. First budget is government building, nine-point-one percent increase. I dropped, uh, this item in here, it is spread evenly throughout all budgets and utilities as well, but, um, looking to hire, uh, in the budget next year, a deputy public works director. This is a high-level leadership position then that would really give, uh, PW Director Edgar, uh, leadership support that he, that he absolutely needs, um, in the, the pace at which we're, we're putting him and his team through the expectations that we, that we ask out of PW, um, from all this growth and all these development projects that you wouldn't often immediately think, as a layperson, would involve Public Works, but at every business recruitment call, they want Public Works on the call. And so this is a, uh, Mayor, you might be twisting your eyes there, I think in the original budget, we called this an assistant city engineer, um, same budget impact, uh, the title that we're thinking about going towards, um, and again, same level in the organization as a public, as a deputy public works director, um, broadening it, broadening it out a bit from what the council saw in work session as an assistant city engineer. Again, same grade, gradation in the salary scale, uh, same budget impact, but, uh, getting that, a person that's a bit more of that, uh, leadership level position, that can reduce our reliance on consultants, and one of the items I didn't put in here, um, is that we were able to reduce our budget line item, um, for third-party engineering consultants by thirty, forty thousand dollars? Thirty thousand dollars, um, to expect the reduced reliance on those third-party engineering consultants, um, by the hiring of this position. This is a project management position as well, um, and so this, again, just improves our staff capacity to manage projects internally, to rely on consultants a little bit less to manage projects, and then just frankly to give, uh, a much-needed staff support, um, that is, is currently running our public works department very, very thin. Uh, we've got some increased costs for janitorial services, both on rebidding for the, the buildings that we have, and then the cost to, to serve the new building, uh, over PDPW. Same goes for refuse disposal, we have an entire new building that we need to pick up the garbage for. Fleet budget, not much to talk about here, um, four percent increase, uh, it's a, it's an increase to the motor fuel and the small tool costs, um, as our fleet continues to grow and fuel continues to cost more. Streets budget, similar, the biggest thing to call out here is we continue to put pressure and funding behind our seal coat and crack seal programs, so a thirty-thousand-dollar additional funding of the crack seal and seal coat program. We just continue to add more lane miles of streets, um, and, and the annual maintenance and keeping up with streets, um, and, and the pavement we have throughout town just continues to be, um, a need. Parks, continue to go to the park system, uh, and so the Public Works Department continues to have more parks to manage and, and maintain. Um, so more parks, it means more fertilizer and weed control, it means more fields that need chalk and, and field dry. Um, and then we did pull down the shop materials a little bit, and so wanted to call that out in, in this budget as well. But, um, certainly more parks equal a bit more costs as the, of the folks out there maintaining them. And then there's the, uh, the four bar charts there for the, uh, the four departments that we just talked about, cumulatively averaging three-point-eight-nine percent over the course of those seven years, um, for Public Works. Lastly, Parks and Recreation, uh, not a whole lot of items to call out next year for Parks and Rec, three-point-one-eight percent. Um, their registration software, which is a couple of years, um, since rollout, has been really well-received, just some increased costs there, but it's a wonderful tool that But it's a wonderful tool that allows residents to register online. It integrates really nicely with our website and has been really well received by staff as well. And then we continue to rent more equipment, frankly, this is portable toilets, as we rent more portable toilets throughout throughout the community, along with a few other equipment rentals that occur in Parks and Recreation. Bar chart there, pretty consistent growth and and pretty conservative budgeting in the Parks and Rec Department. So 3.65% average annual growth. And then before I flip to kind of my last slide, two items that the council's being asked to approve tonight, hopefully you saw in your budget, we can answer questions on, is the insurance budget, which we talked just a little bit about in 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 work sessions and then also the CIP, which council has talked about at a high level, but we'll dive deeply in here in February. So just as you're doing motions tonight and CIP, I didn't have it in my presentation here. We don't usually include that, what we usually do is dive in deep with council. So what you're setting tonight on that CIP budget is just the amount of the levy is going to happen, amount of levy that will happen to fund the CIP. And then we'll dive in deep with council here in November, December, as we actually peel through the CIP of the actual fleet and vehicles and equipment that's being purchased. So you are setting those numbers for tonight, but certainly not establishing, you know, what is, what's getting, what's getting purchased or what have you on the CIP. Same goes for insurance, we're still working through our insurance quote from our our medical and dental and ancillary benefits providers. Insurance committee meets this week to review the quote from our insurance provider. And we hope to have good results from that that are that are supported by our insurance committee. And then that'll, that those numbers then will get refined to council as we come back in December. So with that, Mayor, take any questions? And the truth and taxation hearing, so after folks receive their their notifications of what this tax increase would actually mean to their property, they can, they're welcome to call city staff and or attend the truth and taxation hearing on Tuesday, December 3rd at 7:00 PM.
All righty. Floor is open for questions? Any? None, council members? Anything?
I'll, I'll just comment, I really appreciate the first slide where you broke out how the the growth in the community is is re- is reducing what would have been to a taxpayer. So I do appreciate that call out. That's very helpful.
Thank you.
Just a general statement for all of staff, the time and effort, putting this together, working with us, trying to get to a number, a levy number and continuing working on that right up until December when we actually set the the actual number. With that, seeing nothing else, thank you very much, Mr. Martin.
Thank you.
Anyone wish to move the motion setting the preliminary budgets as outlined in the action?
I'll move to adopt a motion setting the preliminary 2025 general fund operating budget, the preliminary 2025 CIP budgets, the preliminary 2025 insurance budget, the preliminary 2025 Port Authority operating levy and the preliminary 2025 levy and budget hearing date required by the city of Rosemount.
Second.
Motion by Klimpul, second by Essler, roll please.
Freski?
Aye.
Essler?
Aye.
Klimpul?
Aye.
Wysensel?
Right, aye. Motion passes 4-0. And that completes item 9B, I believe. Is that where I'm at? Yes, 9B. So with that, we'll move on to announcements, city, city staff updates.
Mayor, I don't think I have anything for you tonight, so I can, oh, Dan, yeah, go ahead, yeah, yeah.
Mayor, council members, I just wanted to remind everyone tonight that on Monday, which is September 23rd, we're going to be having a tour along with the Park and Rec Commission. And I took the Park and Rec Commission on a van tour back in May. And we toured, I think, all of these same sites that we're going to be going to, which includes Amberfields, the the new parks we're building in the Amberfields Development, we're going to look at that. We're going to go to the Pickleball Court Project, we're going to go to Talamo, which is a new park. We're going to go over to the Flint Hills Athletic Complex and look at all the new trails that we're building. And then we're also going to go to Dunmore. When we went by all of these projects in May, I think, other than just the pickleball project, nothing had even been touched. And so I think even for our park commissioners, it's going to be kind of a a fun opportunity to see all the progress that we've made this summer. We're going to have an MVTA bus, we're going to leave City Hall at 5:30. So if any of the neighbors happen to see this bus driving through their their neighborhood on Monday night, that's what we're doing, and feel free to come out and and interact with us. I I think we have until 7 o'clock.
To get back from Utility Commission, yeah.
We have a Utility Commission meeting at 7:00, so we'll get you back by 7 o'clock to City Hall. But we're looking forward to it, just a reminder, a great opportunity to kind of hear about some of the projects, some of the ups and downs that we've kind of faced this summer. But we're hoping you can all make it and join the Park and Rec Commission.
And is, are we having a joint meeting with them af, you know, at 7 o'clock or just?
No, at 7 o'clock, you have a Utility Commission meeting.
I have a Utility Commission.
You have a Utility Commission meeting, so, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All righty. Any announcements from any of the council members? None, all right. And so we will move to the upcoming calendar. Give me a second here. So we are at, which was mentioned earlier this evening, the Food Truck Festival. It's Saturday, September 21st from 4 to 9 at Central Park. The aforementioned Park and Recreation Commission meeting, the tour before from 5:30 to 7:00 and then at 7:00 to 8:00 is the actual commission meeting. Our Utility Commission regular meeting is for 7:00 to 8:00 PM, again, on Monday, the 23rd. We have a, the city's helping sponsor a Halloween costume swap, September 24th from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. And that is held where?
Steeple Center.
Steeple Center, all right. Planning Commission on September 24th from 6:30 to 7:30 here at City Hall. The Youth Commission meeting, September 25th, Wednesday, from 3:45 to 4:45 at the Steeple Center. The next City Council work session will be on October 1st from 5:00 to 7:00 PM. And the City Council meeting will follow from 7:00 to 8:00 PM. And just to look ahead a little farther, the Fall Cleanup Day is that Saturday, October 5th, 8 to 12, just to get that out there at Erickson Park. With that, any other business to come before council? Seeing none, I'll move to adjourn. Second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes, we are adjourned, thank you.